Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. I'm going to read the executive order on remote participation. On Monday, on March 28th, 2025, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill 62, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Master Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. If you can join in that, join me, swing and flag, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America, into the court of justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Commissioner Stady?
I am here, sir, by Zoom.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Shea is present, we have a caller.
Richard, do we have your permission to use your stamp today?
Permission is granted, yes, sir.
Thank you. Number three, executive session, we have no executive session today. Number four minutes. We have one, two, three, four sets of minutes to be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to move approval. I had noted, communicated to the secretary, to our assistant, that there was a tiny error on the executive session. I wasn't sure with my schedule if he had corrected it, but I'll move approval of the open session, meeting minutes of May 13, May 21, and May 28, all as presented.
Okay.
Motion made in second, in all favor?
Aye.
Yes, please.
I'll move approval on executive session. I think there was just a typo on the word dealt. If it's been corrected, I hope it's fine. That was the only typo, it was on page two. I would move approval of that as presented, and then again, minutes not to be released until such time.
Until the chair sort of quits, yes, I'll second that.
Motion made in second, as amended, in all favor?
Aye. Aye.
It is voting. Great. How about June 4th, regular, oh, that's, you just did that. Thank you, appointments?
No, sir.
What about this guy?
He's coming in under item number seven.
Okay, number five, appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. Each meeting, we have a public comment session. People are allowed to come in, visit and comment up to three minutes on any subject reasonably before us. If anyone out in Zoom land is ready for public comment, now is the time, please. John Cronin, has anyone commented? You reached out to you, vote?
We received a letter from a resident in Walpole concerning the solar, planned solar projects. The resident has asked for a host of information on a couple of occasions. We're going to be treating it as a public records request, so.
Okay, so it's being answered.
One of the items is some old records, and we may convey to this individual, he's one of the jointed commissioners at an upcoming meeting, so just wanted to alert you.
Okay. All right. Last call on public comment. Number seven, whole business, electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay.
We have some folks here again. I'm looking at. EV charger installation proposal. Let me go get Nick.
Okay. Give the commissioners an update. It's the chair.
Nick, have a seat right there.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Joining us is Nick Valari from EFSE Solutions. You know, working with Nick's company over the last month or so to pull together some proposals for electric vehicle charging stations across the county. After our last meeting, with some scope guidance from the commissioners, we've worked with Nick and his team to amend the proposals. Before you this afternoon is a reflection of that. There are a couple of things that I'll yield to Nick to explain, including a new charging model that is kind of exciting, that kind of changes the scope. But after review of the proposals with our electrician, Shikushing, the county is happy with what is before you this afternoon. It reflects a charging station in each of the following six locations. One, at the golf course. The preferred location will be down near the tennis courts. The next is the Rentham District Court. Stoughton District Court. The lot behind the Registry of Deeds, over near the old shack. And the Agricultural High School, as well as finally Brookline District Court. So we've reviewed the latest proposals, they are favorable to the county, and so I put these before you, and I'll turn it over to Nick Valari for further explanation with the chair.
Nick? Go ahead, Nick.
So John, I want to thank everybody for allowing us back in to present these EV stations. Before I get going, I would like to preface that as of Monday of last week, we rolled out a, what I'm calling, a Level 2 supercharger. Some people are calling it a smart charger, I'm identifying as a supercharger. So when John and I were talking about the limited amount of space and what they call in EV world dwell time, I thought potentially the Level 2 superchargers, as I'm calling it, would be an excellent opportunity for Norfolk County in all their locations. Now, why is that? Now, not that I go to court a lot, but I think the average person that goes to court is in the court parking lot, if you would, for about two hours, right? You don't want to show up late, so you're 15, 20 minutes early, you're in court for maybe an hour, and then you walk out. The Level 2 superchargers charge the cars basically in half the time that a Level 2 takes. So having the Level 2 superchargers, I'm just going to use the devil court here, would be an awesome opportunity because it's not taking up too much space because the Level 2 superchargers do cost more money. So we can't put in four, two dual-port charging stations to take up four spots. We can only put in one dual that takes up two spots. But the benefit is, again, if court's out, or court's in session, people are going to come in here, charge, by the time they get out, the car should be fairly full, depending upon where the battery was at and how long they were in the court. Now, at the same point in time, as people are walking the streets here, going to get some lunch, whatever they're doing, they can park within two hours, they have a fairly full car. This is, works at all the locations. We did talk about the golf course. Because people do golf for an extended period of time, four hours, the Level 2s probably would be good, but because where we're putting the charging stations, and John Kerbit brought, by the tennis courts?
That's right.
Okay. John had mentioned that people aren't there for that long of a timeframe. So the county thought that going with the Level 2 superchargers at all locations, including Brookline because we only wanted one dual port there, it'd be beneficial for the, again, what I call Level 2 superchargers. Additionally, I would like to identify, and you'll see it in each one of the proposals, that the Level 2 superchargers are a little bit more husky, all right, stronger, all right? They're not as big as the Rentham Level 3 chargers that we installed, but these have a little bit more substance to them. So I think the decision that the county has elected to go with, you know, faster chargers, newer technology, stronger base, better visual, I think it's all a great opportunity. Any questions on that?
So we're talking about the enhanced one, or better one?
Yes.
Will it always be that way? If we're five years into this and it's a success, and another enhanced one comes out, would we be eligible for it?
It's a great question. So based upon the current incentive that they have, we have an opportunity to do what they call a rip and replace, which means we're able to take the old stations out and put new ones in. So if the incentive is the same where it is now in three years, then essentially it can be. But as we all know, rules and legislation changes all the time, so I just can't tell you what's going to be around at that point in time.
Okay. But I mean, obviously they'll wear out, and maybe it takes 20 years, but you know. And if it's going good, we're going to continue. Yes, Sean?
Just to summarize also, to compliment, I should say, what Nick was remarking, early on, the original proposal were 39, excuse me, 31 ports, if I'm not mistaken, altogether, across, that was where we started. This trims it down to six total charging stations. Each station has two ports, so it's technically 12 ports. However, as Nick indicated, this futurized Level 2 charger does provide potentially, potentially, at least three times, potentially, an increased revenue source for the county. It could yield a figure twice as much in projected revenue as was originally proposed. So fewer charging stations due to the limitations of the grant, financial limitations, but with the futurized version being presented, we have the potential to recoup over $30,000 a year in electricity savings. Or revenue from use, I should say, from the use of the chargers.
And if you don't mind. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, he'll throw you to the chair. So I want to make sure I'm clear, I think John just touched on it. We're basically going to have like one charger station at each of those locations, just one?
One, but it's two ports, so two cars can charge at once.
The Aggie gets one, the Stoughton Court gets one, Rentham Court, Brookline, and so on. Okay. And then, you didn't think it was feasible? I'm only asking, to put maybe two behind the Registry of Deeds to give us four, or?
So again, the problem is the incentive doesn't, for the Level 2 supercharger?
Right.
The incentive doesn't cover two charging stations, only covers one.
I see. Okay, okay.
Well.
And John, you felt, John Cronin, the question to you, you felt comfortable with this?
I do, I think the scale is right. When Nick and I talked about this new word device, it's not the Level 3 that the commissioners originally desired last fall.
Right.
That's longer available, but it's close, and it provides the consumer potentially a better choice when they're examining local charging locations for a quick, fast charge, hopefully at a reasonable price. So we think it'll be attractive to the consumer, and it will be minimal impact on the existing parking at each of these locations. In other words, I think, Commissioner Stady, it's a good place to start, and it optimizes the grants that make this.
That is my next question, if I could, for the chair. So it's a good place to start, and I think Nick was saying, this is what the grant allows. Could we at a later time file another, you know, grant or whatever it is, you file again, and add a couple more if it, you know, it was going really well? Like just a few more, or is that?
So the current incentive, as it currently reads, it identifies, you can put, and I'm just using the one Level 2 supercharger.
Right.
One station per street address.
Per street address, okay.
So where I parked behind the courthouse, behind here, there's two parking lots. If each one of those parking lots is a different street address, we can essentially put one Level 2 supercharger in the small lot and one in the back lot. And I think there's another parking lot across the street, smaller parking lot, you could essentially put it there. But everything is going to be subject to the incentive.
Okay.
The reason I say that is the Level 3 incentive was filled within 11 months. So once these get installed, we'll call it three months, from the time the incentive gets approved, the utility approves it, and we can install. You may say, hey, Nick, there's more demand for this, we want to put more in, we can do it, but it has to be in a different street address.
I see. Okay.
And then, like anything else, when the incentive is filled, there's nothing we can do until a new incentive is released.
Okay. And these come with the same warranty and protection as the other ones that you were giving us?
Yes, sir.
For? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
To that point, did you want to talk about the performance basis piece?
Yeah, I'll get there in a second. I just want to go back to what John had said. The potential for additional revenue with the Level 2 chargers, I'm sorry, the Level 2 superchargers opposed to the Level 2s. So identify the Level 2 chargers for a full charge on an app, or where the battery identifies is, is somewhere between six and eight hours. The Level 2 superchargers are somewhere between two and three hours. So you're going to get potentially more turnover with the Level 2 superchargers, even though you only have two spots, there's more turnover. So you're going to get two to three people charging per port opposed to four people all at once in the course of a day. Does that make sense, guys, or do I want to?
I get it. They're faster, so quicker turnover, yeah.
One of the things that John had mentioned for me to bring up, which is, in my opinion, one of the greatest things on the Level 2 charging stations that we put out, even the Level 3s, is the performance base. So a lot of the charging stations that other people have put out in the past requires a monthly fee or an annual fee. And at least in the past, when electric vehicles were out, but they weren't really being used as they were, a lot of the business owners or municipalities had viewed their misfortune on the charging stations because people weren't using them, which incurred a monthly or yearly cost. The way we set this up is a performance basis, meaning if nobody charges, because, the court's open in August?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just say there's a month that the courts are shut down, for whatever reason. And if nobody's charging, you're still going to get a fee with the annual fee. With the performance basis, if nobody charges, there's no cost to the county. So you're just having it there. Now, what is the cost? The cost is 10%. So whatever you charge, let's say you charge in 30 cents a kilowatt hour, on the performance base, you're really getting 27 cents a kilowatt hour. Now, as activity gets going, you may say, okay, Nick, let's switch from the performance base to the annual cost because we get a lot of activity. And you say, we might just do that and deaden them and nowhere else. So you can do that. So we can manipulate it however you want. Manipulate is probably the wrong word to use, circle that.
Manage.
Manage, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Nick?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. Anyway, kind of touched on it again, I just want to get reminded of it, though. So if, say that, say through no fault of manufacturing, the outlet needed repairs. So those repairs would fall to us, it would have to pay for it, correct?
Yes, but they are under warranty.
Okay.
So just like your vehicle, right? There are certain things that are covered under the warranty and the wear and tear items on. So there would be some items that are not covered under the warranty.
And what if somebody plowed through it?
That would be essentially covered by your insurance.
Okay. And who would fix the device?
The local electrician could do it. We'll do it, you know, it doesn't matter, you can.
But there are people out there that do it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anything else? I'm going to move to the next level here. What do we need to do, John?
I would appreciate a motion by the commissioners to allow me to endorse each of the planned six proposals on your behalf, and I will submit these then to EVS, EVSE for continued application to the state. It'll take a few months, I would think, before we hear anything.
Richard, you ready to make that motion?
I am, I'm so sorry, and I don't mean to delay it, I don't want to delay the moment. One final question. Someone there talking? Okay. Are we, we're sending an application in under this incentive. Are we better off filing like the, asking for the whole county, or just doing these seven specific locations? Oh, we are doing the whole county, right? We are doing the whole county, right? The whole county is being covered by this. Am I correct?
There are six, there are six locations, and they're on, each location represents an area of the county, that's correct.
Okay, beautiful, okay.
All four houses, the registry, the Aggie, and the golf course.
The Aggie is in there.
Aggie's in there, okay, good, I wanted to make sure, okay. I'm sorry. All right. I'll be very happy and pleased to move that we direct Director Cronin, on behalf of the commissioners, to move forward in the proposals, execute the proposals, or wherever else action is necessary for the electric vehicle charging stations as outlined and submitted as of this date.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
All right, that's great.
Nick had a quick follow-up.
Yes, Nick.
I just want to kind of set proper expectations with the flow. So at this point in time, we have all the documents we need to submit, minus the signed documents. Once we get that, we will submit for the incentive. The current incentive is taking six to eight weeks to receive. Once that incentive is approved, assuming it is approved, which it should, you'll get the documents, you just need to sign off on it. The documents you're signing today are non-binding. When the incentive documents come over, that's when everything becomes binding. Okay? Any questions on that aspect?
No, we, we, we signed week to week, we've always, we can even move it up from better than now if we have to.
Yep, I just, I just want to understand what you're signing today and what the workflow is. Secondly, if you guys don't mind, I just want to throw a special shout-out to Ed McQuillan of Port Energy. He's one of the guys that works with the ECR team. He was the reason why we were able to present everything here. EVSE is the installation team, and East Coast Renewable is the overall broker of it. So I want to thank those three entities, and I have the four of you for allowing us to come in and present for Norfolk County and for all the community. So thank you very much.
We're very excited to take this first step and go green, and thank you for your help as well, and thanks to the board. It was just a good day, big day for us.
Director Cronin, last comment.
Quick question, Nick. In addition to the timeline you just mentioned, 68 weeks from now, if everything goes well, we get the incentive receipt back. When, if everything goes favorably, when do you think the, the individual charging stations can begin to be installed across the county?
It's a great question. I want to tell you that the answer is going to be within one to two weeks. However, I have to be a little bit more.
From the receipt.
From, from receipt of the incentive, after you sign off on it, it has to go back so they know that was accepted, okay? So once we get confirmation, however, like anything else, if a bunch of them are coming back all at the same point in time, we may not be one week out, it might be two or three weeks on, but.
So conceptually, we may be looking at, if everything goes well, about three months from now, approximately six supercharge EV stations installed at the six locations.
Yeah, just want to correct it, six Level 2, what I'm calling, superchargers, okay?
In about three months.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, we took the vote. You got the papers, John?
I have them. I'll be in touch with this office to sign them off, yep.
All right, Nick.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, good luck. I'll talk to you again.
Thank you, Nick. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was number seven, whole business. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, Walter Recreational Facility. I move a notice of contingent employment for Casey Kelly as a seasonal golf associate at the rate stated effective date 6/12/25, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, in all favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next.
I'll move notice of rehire for Lily Chantina of Randell as a seasonal golf associate, the rate stated effective date 6/12/25, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. There's more on vacation carryover, the question for Registry of Deeds.
Do you have to approve that?
Yes, we don't name any people, but we do, we have been approving them.
Contractual obligation, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, I'll move approval of the fiscal '25 vacation carryover request from the Registry of Deeds.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the payroll request for the Registry of Deeds, all in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, payroll expense.
Peter, you're on the clock on this.
I make a motion to approve warrant 25-49 payroll accounting in the amount of $153,328.12, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is approved. Next.
Motion to approve 25-49 subsection 25 payroll of the school, in the amount of $402,803.63, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next.
The next item is 22-49 subsection 25.1 payroll of the school, in the amount of $93,973.04, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
The next item is 25-50 ARPA Medfield 1348, in the amount of $8,450, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
The next item is 06-002-25 expense of the county, in the amount of $114,415.60, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
And lastly is 25-12 expense of the school in the amount of $74,503.30, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote. That includes payroll expense warrants for today. Number 10, ARPA program transfers, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. This afternoon, I wish to ask for your permission, your vote, to accept the transfer funds back to the county from two distinct operations. The first was a total of $17,996 from two separate ARPA grants from the town of Canton. They have developed small surpluses that they can no longer use towards these projects as they are completed. That is ARPA 1171 and ARPA 1310. With your vote today, we're accepting the return of this $18,148 for potential redistribution, which I'll get into in just a minute. On Thursday, June 5th, Treasurer Bellotti emailed me the following message relative to ARPA application 1222. "The treasurer's office has used a portion of this grant we were awarded by the commissioners to establish a concrete plan to implement a fiscal literacy program to be within Norfolk County. In light of the increased staffing hours and efficiencies within my office, I am able to return the remaining amount of the grant to the county and use existing staff to further the goals of this grant. We would like to retain a small amount of $5,000 for printing and other materials. Any consideration regarding this request would be greatly appreciated." Following through on the treasurer's request, before you this afternoon, I'd ask for your vote to receive the surplus of $70,833.34. Next week, if and when you approve to accept these, return of these funds, we'll present to you a proposed redistribution. We have to kind of sum up where the, the location of these funds are best utilized. As the commissioners may recall, when we closed the obligation period for the ARPA grant back in December, many communities, including the county, established what's known as excess capacity grants to receive any surplus funds from programs such as this, and obligate them into these new or excess capacity grants. We'll likely look towards those grant opportunities, we'll bring them before you next week. But currently, we're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of $79,000 in total revenue to be redistributed. So with the vote accepting these funds back, we'll be back before you next week with a proposed redistribution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you require a vote today, or is that being put in the gentleman's way?
Any questions first?
Just the, the Canton one, do you know specifically, if I could, for the chair, to Director Cronin, what the two things were left over? I'm just curious.
So again, Commissioner, what I can tell you is, the first sum of funds come from ARPA 1171.
Yep.
That was a grant totaling $91,220. The town is returning $17,996 from it. They've accomplished the grant intended task. The second grant is ARPA 1310. That grant totaled $553,514.39. Canton is returning $150.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
So the total is, the total, Commissioner.
So the total is, the total commissioner is eighteen, one forty-eight between the two.
Yeah, I think one of them was a water project. The other one, I'm not sure, but okay, that's fine. That's great.
I did ask Bill, he left a voicemail with Randy Scollins, just to
Yes. Yep.
confirm this, this return of funds was provided to us a couple of weeks ago by the town of Canton.
That's great. That's great.
So this is a furtherance of ARPA-related items and it was expected. We talked about what money could be turned. So now it is. We're reapplying it.
We are, and I, and I want to hearken back to the decision the commissioners made to accept the excess capacity grants. That, that tactic allows you to transfer and reuse unused funds without having those, I believe, or a total of nineteen grant applications that you approved back in December. Without that, these funds have no place to go. They would go back to the federal government. So you're optimizing the grant. The, the monitoring cycle, as well as the furtherance of our involvement with our communities, provides us the opportunity to not only receive these funds, but put them back into areas that are desirable and eligible.
Okay. So it's, it's proceeding as it should.
Yes. So I respectfully ask that the commissioners vote to accept the transfer of these funds back from the town of Canton and the treasurer's office, and I will resubmit a request as early as next week for a proposed destination for these funds.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could really quick, again, Mr. Mr. Cronin, Director Cronin. So let's say, okay, I'm going to pick on Canton. So Canton's giving back about eighteen thousand roughly, real quick. So if Canton had another application in, are we obligated to take care of their other obligation in the pipeline to the extent of eighteen thousand? Or is the money going to our pool and then we kind of redistribute as we kind of see fit? How's that work?
It's more of the latter. In the event the town of Canton had excess capacity applications, Commissioner, it would, it would be reasonable to think that Canton ought to consider moving their surplus from one of those grants into an excess capacity grant. Unfortunately, Canton did not establish any excess capacity grants during that time period. The city of Quincy did develop a excess capacity grant. They've informed us, they have a surplus of funds. I think it's around thirteen thousand dollars. And they want to move those funds into the excess capacity grant. So they'll, they'll get it back. But unfortunately, Canton does not. There were, there were approximately, I may recall, Commissioner, I think there was about ten communities in Norfolk County that took advantage of our, of our offer to send in excess capacities. Not everyone did. But in order for Canton to have received them back, they need that kind of an outlet.
Okay, that's fine. Answered my question. I got it. That's good. All right. I would move the suggested motion by a director, Mr. Collins, I'm sorry. Let me catch.
Hi, Richard, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move the motion as suggested by a director to accept the funds from the town of Canton and Treasurer Bellotti in the sum close to about seventy-nine thousand dollars as outlined today.
Was it seventy-nine or eighty-nine?
It was eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
I'm sorry, eighty-nine. My mistake.
Second. Okay, motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Push that along. Next, eleven. April twenty-five. Trial balances for approval. In our packet. We have the trial balance sheet dated for thirty twenty-five in the amount of thirty-two million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and forty cents. Any questions on this? The standard form that we use. We got a couple of questions answered last week. Pretty standard stuff.
I'd be pleased to move acceptance of the trial balance of April twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Take care of the April trial balance. Excellent work. We'll be very long. We've got it in your packet, number, oh, I'm sorry, number twelve. Report from the computer department on any bid openings and contract awards.
None this week.
None today. Number, number thirteen, transfer within the fiscal year twenty-five Wallson Recreation Facility budget. The paperwork is supplied with us here. We're we're taking, we're transferring five hundred, five thousand dollars to the two following accounts. The first one is two thousand to elevator repair. Second one is five thousand to pro shop inventory. We're taking it out of two line items in the present golf course budget. The first one is miscellaneous building repair. So it would be a transfer over. The second one is miscillary, miscellaneous current charges. So this is existing money in the amount of five thousand.
Yeah, just to be clear, I think the first line you read is an example line. It's a straight five thousand dollar transfer.
Okay, I was reading all the particulars. It's a straight five thousand dollar transfer.
Five thousand coming from miscellaneous current charges to pro shop inventory. And briefly, Commissioners, the, three, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The golf course reports that promotional product that they sell in the golf course was last procured in December. They've run out of inventory, so they're looking for the resources to purchase new inventory. That's the whole point of it.
Right. Any questions about the golf course? Next. Number fourteen.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have the motion to move the transfer?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to move the transfer later.
Peter, will you do it?
Sure, I'll make the motion to move the transfer as requested by the golf.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the transfer within fiscal year twenty-five Wallson Recreation Facility Department within at five thousand dollars transfer. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Number fourteen, also in your packet, request from engineering department from the town of Medfield looking for engineering services. They have in front of me a request from Maurice Le, Director of Public Works in the town of Medfield dated June fifth, twenty twenty-five. And I know Patrick's on the horn here, but this request is for construction layout locations and grade elevations on public way in the town of Medfield. It says Vine Lake Cemetery Improvement Design, Beta Engineering to provide additional interment areas within stormwater infrastructures, roadway extensions, retaining walls and grading improvements. So certain work as needed to be done by our engineering department to help out the town of Medfield in a cemetery project. How's that sound, Patrick?
Sounds good, Chairman Shay.
Okay, I have all the paperwork here. If we're going to have a vote, we could push it right forward today, get it signed by the three of us. Any questions about the town of Medfield's request?
A quick question, if I could. So, I mean, it's a more of a comment, it's a comment, I guess, to you, Mr. Chairman, to Patrick. So this is interesting. It's our second request for engineering services. I think we had one last week from the town of Bellingham. Am I right on that, Patrick? I don't know if you were on the call, but.
Yes, that's correct.
So how do we know? You got Medfield, Bellingham, we might get another one. What, what kind of, do you say to schedule up and you deal with the towns and say, well, you're first and this, how, how does this work if I was getting to this project now?
Depending on the type of projects and the scope and scale of each project, we, we kind of, some of them are short-term, some are long-term, and we kind of space them out. And I talk to the towns and I give them a real estimate of when it's going to be finished. And some of them are a short, shorter project, so we can squeeze them in. So it's.
I'd view this one, if I could ask.
This is going to be ongoing. The town is doing the construction work themselves, so it'll be on, will be on call as needed to give them, they're doing, it's the last section that's open in the cemetery. They're expanding the roadway, the drainage, curbing, and retaining walls for new interment areas. And we'll give them line and grade as they need it. It'll be intermittently. So it won't be a continuous project. It's like one day a week, every, every couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then as they build it, we'll, and they need more information, we'll, we'll put it, we'll take it from the design plans and put it on the ground for them.
That's, that's cool. Now, Bellingham, if I could, one more comment. Bellingham, that's something like a longer project, right?
Long project.
There's a lot going on there.
Yes.
So just a suggestion to the chair, if I could, could we ask that Patrick provide us like maybe updates on these projects now that we've got a couple of things going? Maybe every couple of months or whatever, just to kind of, you know, give us an update on what's happening? Would that be okay? Just to let us know what's going on with Bellingham, Medfield?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stady, ironically, you should mention that. I was going to bring that up in my remarks in a few minutes.
Okay.
This, this summer schedule, now that we're past the budget season and after we close FY twenty-five, I intend to reach out to the department heads and invite them in throughout the summer to give the commission an update on all project activities as we begin the fiscal year. So the answer to your question is yes, but you'll be seeing more throughout the summer.
That'd be good. That'd be good. And John, it almost goes along with that thing we talked about, about looking at the different things that we provide our towns, you know, building a base. Because this is one that we don't want to forget. It's, it's good for all of us. It's good for county government. You know, it's a, I've been active and I know you, everybody's active in their own ways, but the last week or so with different campaigns, talking about the county, I'm always talking about, well, in this town, we did this and we did that, and people are amazed. You know, we're out there. We do a lot, awful lot. We can do more, but it's, this is good stuff. Thank you for that. Thank you.
And excuse me, Commissioners, I'll be putting another project request in next week for the town of Millis for survey work at the Oak Grove Farm for the farm commission. So we, we, we have plenty of people knocking on the door.
That's good. That's good. That's good. That's good.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, well, we have a.
Thank you, Patrick.
Our engineer here, Patrick, any other engineering questions?
No, Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Patrick.
That concludes the matter in the town of Medfield. Our, our papers are already signed, Patrick.
Did we vote it? Did we vote that? We did, right?
Sorry, I thought we did.
Richard, you want to make the vote?
Sure. I'll just move that we approved the request in the town of Medfield for engineering services from Norfolk County for the project as described in, in our meeting today, and it's described on the paperwork submitted.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the request from the town of Medfield for some engineering services from the Norfolk County Engineering Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Patrick, swing by later. I'll give you a copy of the signed form.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Number fifteen, report of the county director.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Now, the first item, just to reiterate, I, I'm planning to contact the department heads after July first to begin scheduling them on a weekly basis to come before the commissioners and discuss activities within the departments that can be expected in fiscal year twenty-six. Again, this will likely be in mid-July, somewhere in that frame, timeframe throughout the summer. Let's see. So speaking of FY twenty-five closure, just wanted to remind everybody that Maureen McCune and Phil Iantoski have sent out a couple of memos relative to the FY twenty-five close process. First of all, all purchase orders must be in for biddable items by June thirteenth. For non-bid items, emergency items, June twenty-fifth. Transfer requests within groups have to be received by June thirteenth, this Friday, for approval by the commissioners at their meeting next week on June eighteenth. And then finally, Maureen is looking for department heads to submit their proposed reserve list for taking existing encumbrances into fiscal year twenty-six for projects that are still going on. That reserve list will be acted upon in July. And as a reminder, the county closes its books for FY twenty-five on July tenth. The commissioners are meeting, obviously, on the eighteenth of June, and then again on the twenty-fifth. We will continue the meeting on the twenty-fifth in the event that there is any needed action on closure for financial items relevant to FY twenty-five. The disaster recovery room at the Aggie is coming along quite well. I want to thank our facilities department for both their electrician and painter services. The chick Cushing reports that most of the electrical work is completed. He's got to swap out some outlets, install some plate, base plates and so forth. It is virtually done and ready. We're having the floors prepped and cleaned as we speak while Sam Tyler and his team get ready to move material from High Street down to the Aggie. We understand the registry of deeds is paying a visit on Tuesday afternoon. Sam Tyler will be there to meet him and show the space to him. In the event that commissioners, any of the commissioners want to see the space, more than welcome to bring you down there. We just have to have a little bit of a notice so that we can check in with the schools and gain access. Please let me know if you'd like to see it. It's a, it's a very nice space. At some point, I would like to hear from the commissioners on their preferred time for, and date for a county commissioners association meeting. The last meeting the association had was on January twenty-eighth. It's been almost six months. We'd like to reach out to other county directors and find out best dates for them. I believe Bristol County is the next one up to host. But if anyone has preferred times, please let me know what they are.
Who's up to host? I'm sorry, John. Who's hosting it?
Bristol is up next.
Okay, yep.
Just a reminder, we had a quad county ARPA meeting, our quarterly meeting this past week. It was great to catch up with our peers in the other counties. Everyone's kind of doing the same thing. You, you today dealt with transfers within certain applications. I, I'd like to alert the commissioners that Norfolk County leads the way. The other counties are copying our form, copying our process. I just got off the phone with Plymouth County this morning, so we're all in the same boat together, trying to optimize the grant that was given to us and make sure the communities have a chance to make sure that those funds go back to the federal government. Great to catch up with our peers. I want to alert the commissioners, save the date time. Lucille Cassear, RSVP director, has provided us a flyer for an upcoming event on August. Thank you, Chairman. August fourteenth. This is the annual volunteer appreciation luncheon. It'll be held August fourteenth, which is a Thursday, at eleven AM at the Four Points, Sheridan Norwood, same location as last year. Lucille is looking for responses by July twenty-fifth. This obviously is a well-attended and a great opportunity to connect with all the wonderful people that make that program work. I think it'll be an important meeting, given the kind of stress the program's under, both operationally and financially from the federal government. So your support and your, your continued involvement with the program is, is much appreciated. But that's August fourteenth, eleven to one PM. Just let Lucille know what your availability is. And then finally, I've notified the commissioners, the Quincy District Court, which is owned by the Commonwealth, but is still operated by the county, is undergoing tremendous HVAC challenges as, as expected. The HVAC system has collapsed in that building. There were four compressors. We are down to one operable compressor, which is insufficient to cool the building. Working with the state, they have determined the best option is to bring in temporary cooling units to keep the environment habitable through the summer. They'll remove those cooling systems and generate the powers them probably around Memorial Day, excuse me, Labor Day, and bring them back next summer. The, the Commonwealth has signed a lease with a landlord to relocate the Quincy District Court occupants to a site formerly known as the Patriot Ledger Building. They are prepping to remove themselves from the Quincy site somewhere towards Labor Day of twenty twenty-six, give or take a week. So we're all working towards that, that particular timeframe, trying to keep this particular building operational, safe. This is an important timeframe as well because tomorrow was Law Day in Quincy District Court, starting at, I believe, nine thirty. Cooling units will be on spot because I believe it's going to be a rather warm day. So we continue to support the state in any way we can, but Quincy District Court has some struggles right now, but long-term, the plan is now in place for them to relocate in approximately sixty-three weeks. That is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Director Cronin?
Oh, sounds good. Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay, well, that concludes that. Last item, emergency items or topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be.
I just comment, I think we all attended and enjoyed the the recent agricultural graduation that happened a few days ago, and I just wanted to commend our people who are in charge of keeping the grounds and for preparing the event. It was just a beautiful night, a wonderful ceremony, John Martin's last one as our superintendent. But it's always a special night. I know for all the commissioners, and the place just looked particularly great. We're very fortunate to have such a wonderful place that we serve as trustees of, and I, I want to again, acknowledge the hard work of the maintenance men and all others who put that together for us. Great job. Great night.
Excellent. Excellent.
And the ducks, by the way, the ducks we collected, I found to have a mystical meeting, we'll have to share at a later time, but um. I think one of my colleagues might be misinformed, I have to straighten him out on that, but that's okay, that's alright.
Okay, that's a good topic, that's. Remember last week, I, I asked you to look at your book for the summer?
Yes.
Well, let me draw your attention to the, the following dates in the, in July and August. Uh, in an effort to plan our whole calendar right through, due to vacations and different matters. First, I'm proposing. That we. Uh, complete. The month of June, which is eighteenth twenty five. Then the following week after that, the first week of July, is the week of July. One, two, three, and four, with the Friday, the fourth being a holiday. I'm gonna propose that we take a vacation day on June second. Now, my, my reason for that selection is, the following week. On a before June eleventh, we have to do our end of the year transactions, and we always keep that week open, so we need to be here. So we're either gonna meet on July ninth or July eleventh, depending on the paperwork flow. So that would give us the following week, one meeting off. Then we'd meet the rest of the month of July, which is sixteen, twenty three, and thirty. Moving into August, we'd meet the week of the sixth. And the week of the thirteenth, the reason for that is the RSVP luncheon is Friday, the fourteenth. So we know we. All hope to be here, and I'm proposing that we take the week of, or the day of. Wednesday, the twentieth of August. And then come back, of course, for this, for this twenty seventh, then Wednesday. September third. Uh, I'm asking you, you take this under advisement and see if those dates are good. And then if we confirm them up next week, we'll be able to set our calendar from now to Labor Day.
Alright, great, thanks, Mr. Chairman. That's great, no, thank you for doing that, now, do you want to vote on this next week, right, Joe?
Sure, just in case something else comes up, you know, I was.
Are you saying, Mr. Chairman, are you saying that we, if we meet July ninth, we don't have to meet July eleventh, do we, on a Friday?
Well, we're either meeting the ninth or eleventh, depending on how much paperwork. Remember that's the end of the year. Signatories and what have you, that we have to do?
Yeah, yes.
How would you describe that, John? Year in close.
Okay.
It's either the ninth or the eleventh, I won't be able to tell you that we get.
But we could, we could attend it via Zoom, that, i- if we had to on the eleventh, right, on that Friday? Okay, okay.
Can do any of these on Zoom if you want.
Okay, alright.
I think we, but I want to, you know, we're able, uh, you know, some of us are gonna try to travel and then.
Yep.
But those were the other summer days that we had to be here for.
Sounds great. Sounds, it really sounds great, sounds great. Very good. Very good.
And then. We're, we're, we'd come back on Wednesday, the third, after Labor Day.
Yes, sir.
That's, that, so that's the long weekend, the weekend before that too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you could look at those over the next week, I'll carry it to the next week's calendar, and we'll try to firm it up. I have nothing else.
Uh, I would, if you wish, I'd move the adjourn after a very good meeting at two oh one?
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you guys. Thank you, everyone, thank you.